Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Colonial School District Board of Directors. Please raise, uh, rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. Into the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to announce that the Board met in executive session on October 25th to discuss the superintendent's goals and contract. That session lasted about 50 minutes. The Board also met tonight, prior to the meeting, to review the personnel report, additional extra duty position, special education agreement, and assessment appeal updates. We also met and discussed the superintendent's contract. The meeting lasted one hour. Uh, Dr. Christian?
We're excited to welcome, uh, some guests this evening. We have Coach Kavanaugh to recognize our outstanding high school golfer. Coach, thanks for coming out this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Christian. It's my honor and privilege to be here tonight to celebrate and recognize Rihanna Gunaratna for her incredible accomplishments. Before I speak a little about Rihanna, I'd like to take the time to thank the Board for inviting us tonight, Mrs. Lester, uh, for helping set this up tonight, Bill Price, our assistant coach, Dr. Christian, Dr. Bacconi, Mr. Breth, Jen Frangiosa, and the admin team at PW for their support of athletics and the PW golf team, Rihanna's parents, as well as all of the parents from the golf team, and the players for their time and commitment this season. We're here to celebrate Rihanna, and I'd like to do my best to try to explain her accomplishments this season. Rihanna is a freshman this year at PW who tried out for the golf team and ended up making the varsity team in her freshman year. If that was her only accomplishment, it would have been significant, but she accomplished so much more. Our team is a coed team that consists of eight varsity players and 10 JV players. We compete in the Suburban One League Liberty Division. In a match, each team sends out the eight best players, and after the round, the top five scores from each team count in the final scoring to see who wins. Throughout our season, Rihanna played in every varsity match and scored in the top five in every match as well. At our banquet the other night, we honored Rihanna as the recipient of our Jeff Hovis MVP Award, as a co-MVP of the team, and as the Keith Griffin Award winner for the lowest nine-hole average on the PW golf team this year. Rihanna's nine-hole average was 38.09, and her lowest nine-hole score in a match this season was a one-under-par 35. After each match that we play, the scores are sent into the Golf Association of Philadelphia, and they keep records of the scores and calculate a handicap differential for every player. Out of the 24 local high schools that make up the Suburban One League, including 224, or 240-plus golfers, Rihanna finished the season with the eighth-best handicap differential. Please remember that this is a coed league, and Rihanna was taking on and beating the boys all season long. At the end of the golf season, individuals can qualify for the individual tournaments that follow the team golf season. These tournaments are separated as a girls' tournament and boys' tournament. PW sent four players to the individual tournaments. They were Evan Rosenstein, Jr., Brett Keenan, Jr., Ellie Shilt, sophomore, and Rihanna. Congrats to all four of them. First up for Rihanna was the 18-hole Suburban One Tournament, where 31 girls from the Suburban One League competed. In this tournament at Five Ponds Golf Course, Rihanna shot a 75 and finished in third place. She then moved on to the District One Golf Tournament, where the top 66 girls from District One competed. Districts is a two-day golf tournament where you must make the cut after day one to qualify for day two. To qualify for day two, you must be in the top 15 out of the 66 girls competing. The tournament was held at Ravensclaw for the girls, and Rihanna went out and shot a 77. This put her tied for 15th place and got her into day two. In order to move on to states after day two, you had to be in the top nine. Rihanna started day two four strokes, four strokes back from the girl in ninth place. This meant she had to go out on day two and jump six spots to qualify for the state tournament. This would be a monumental task in golf, but one that Rihanna was up for the challenge for. Not only did Rihanna make the jump, she actually jumped to eighth place and did it by going out and shooting a one-under-par 71 at Turtle Creek. This is one of the best tournament rounds, if not the best, that I've seen by a PW golfer while coaching here. This also secured Rihanna's spot in the PIAA State Golf Tournament. At states, 36 of the best girls in the state of PA competed in the tournament. It was held at Heritage Hills Golf Course in York, PA. On this day, on a difficult course, Rihanna went out and shot an 80 and finished tied for 14th in the state of Pennsylvania. I'm not quite sure Rihanna understands the magnitude of her accomplishments this season. Going back as far as I could in the archives of the PIAA golf records, which was 1976, Rihanna ranks as tied for the third-best finish in the state golf tournament in PW history, with none other than her brother Dylan. Although I know she is thrilled to share that spot with him, I also know it will be a goal of hers to beat him in her future years. If I told you about Rihanna's athletic accomplishments this year, I would be, only told you about those, I'd be doing her a disservice. It can be very, very difficult for any golfer in high school, missing class for the individual golf tournaments, let alone to be in your first year in high school. Rihanna missed four days this year while competing in golf tournaments, and you would never know it. She has straight A's and continues to be one of the many excellent student-scholar athletes at PW. The last funny story I want, I would like to share about Rihanna is when she finished her tournament at Suburbans. In all my years coaching, when players finish their round at a tournament, they hang out and relax to see where they will finish. When Rihanna finished her round, she was so excited to take up the country-club life. She ordered a sandwich and tater tots, and you know what she did? She dove right into her schoolwork while waiting for the tournament to end. It was my absolute pleasure to coach Rihanna this year, and I'm lucky to have her as part of the team for the next three years. Please join me in congratulating Rihanna Gunaratna for her incredible accomplishments this season.
4D from October and November. Is there a second? Adam, thank you. Any questions or comments on the minutes? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
I'm looking for online. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the financial reports as presented in items 5B through 5M for October of 2021? Adam, thank you.
Second.
Thanks. Kathy, any questions or comments on the financial reports? All in favor? Motion, please, to approve the treasures report for October of 2021? Jen? Second. Chris, thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Superintendent's update.
Thank you, Mrs. Moore. We have, uh, I have several announcements this evening, the first of which, though, is an important, most important one. It's our opportunity to recognize four Board members. Uh, it's their last meeting this evening, uh, and we want to thank you for your service to the district. Jennifer Dow, Eunice Franklin Becker, Rosemary Northcutt, and Adam Schupack have volunteered for the past four years to help the district, to lead and support the faculty and staff and administration, and, most importantly, support the students of Colonial School District. We told you four years ago it would only be a few nights a month. Uh, we were, we, I was, we were, I was a little under on that one. But obviously, as things changed and became more challenging, what you kept at the center was focusing on students and their success, as well as their safety. You've overseen the district's growth and supported budgets that include a brand-new middle school that'll open in a few months, renovations to this building as we welcome just about one of the largest classes in the district, nearly 500 students. And you helped us navigate through the challenges COVID has presented. You've worked collaboratively with our faculty and staff, and, most importantly, you and your colleagues on the Board have consistently advocated and supported programs designed for student success and achievement. Thank you for your service to the district, and we wish you the best moving forward in all of your endeavors. We have, uh, Karen and Rosemary are here. We have a gift for you to commemorate your time on the Board in Colonial School District. Thank you again. Uh, before I move on, any comments from our outgoing Board members? Secondly, I want to discuss with our community, those in attendance and those watching on YouTube and Zoom, our current COVID data within the county and within the school district, and specifically talk about masking. From November 13th to 15th, Montgomery County saw 480 new COVID cases. The 16th and 17th, 300 cases were recorded, and I talked to the Office of Public Health today, and they are well over 200 cases today. So there's certainly been an uptick, and particularly since Halloween. Uh, our incident rate in the school district is 85.5. In Conshohocken, it's 100, which is in the high range. In Plymouth, it's 91, and in White Marsh, 73, which are both in the substantial range. Positivity rates range from 4% to 7%, which actually put us in the low-to-moderate range. But the incident rate is certainly high and substantial. The topic of masking has been thoroughly discussed and debated, and will continue to be at the local, state, and national levels. The Colonial Administration, back on August 9th of 2021, recommended, and the school Board passed a motion requiring masks for all adults and students while in school. Acting Pennsylvania Health Secretary Beam issued a statewide order requiring masks in schools three weeks later at the end of August. It is possible that order may be lifted at the state level, either on December 4th, or it could last until January 17th, where the governor has indicated he would lift the order. That is still being litigated, and we will continue to watch what happens. If the state's order is lifted in either December or January, school masking requirements or recommendations will be subject to local control via the school boards, which is precisely what occurred on August 9th in 2021. The Board will have to consider a variety of factors regarding masking, including the following: what are the current transmission rates that we're experiencing in our county? And in our local district? The percent, what percentage of our students and staff are vaccinated and fully vaccinated? What are the challenges cold and flu season presents, which we know will cause challenges in identifying COVID cases without testing? And then we also have to look very closely at what the Montgomery County Office of Public Health's requirements are for quarantines, quarantining students. Obviously, safety and welfare is of paramount importance, but there's also a practicality. Presently, as I talked about on August 9th, the current rules for quarantine require that if, if students are in class together and they're in close contact, if they're both masked, one student's positive, if the other student is asymptomatic, he or she may continue to stay in class. Under those current rules, which are still in place, if we remove masks at this time, while we're in high and substantial range, those students would have to quarantine, uh, those who choose not to wear masks. So that's a challenge. I'll talk about busing separately, because I know that's a whole separate rule, and that's been a challenge for all of us throughout the county. Because of these factors, it's my recommendation that the Board wait until after the new calendar year to consider modifications to the masking requirement. This will allow our youngest students full, uh, time to be fully vaccinated, if families choose to do so, there's no requirement. Fortunately, we had nearly 1,200 5- to 11-year-olds receive their first vaccination this past week at Plymouth-White Marsh High School, uh, this past Friday and Tuesday. They will receive their second dose in December and be fully vaccinated as we approach the winter break. Waiting until mid-January to consider modifications to the masking requirement allows the Board to review the transmission rates at the local and county levels, and furthermore, provides time for the Board to review any modifications that the county Office of Public Health has regarding quarantine requirements. And that includes cafeterias, classrooms, and buses. Uh, so it's, uh, continues to be a challenging topic. We certainly understand passion on both sides, uh, and these are not easy decisions and not ones that I or the Board takes lightly. I will say this: in December, we're going to be asking families to voluntarily provide vaccination information. This certainly will help us with, uh, contact tracing. We did it at the high school level this past summer, uh, and for our 7th and 8th graders, because they were eligible to get the vaccine earlier. Uh, and we'll be doing that through our emergency, uh, cards that, uh, folks fill out electronically. Once again, families would have to voluntarily offer that information. It's also helpful, helpful for us, because as we see cases potentially increase during the, after the holidays and during the winter months, it helps our nurses with contact tracing. Uh, and therefore, if students are asymptomatic and they've been fully vaccinated, they can remain in school. Questions from the Board regarding masking and my comments?
I think you've laid it all out pretty well, and, uh, obviously, you've spent a tremendous amount of time on this, and, uh, I don't have any, really any criticism or question of what you've, questions about what you've laid out.
Yeah, just, as we move forward, I do want to take into consideration, um, as we're looking at the levels, um, to possibly treat high schools different than the youngers. Um, I don't know if that's as relevant now that our youngers are able to get vaccinated, um, but, you know, these high school students are out and about and constantly around their friends, and so I, I just, I just feel like there's, it's almost, almost, it's a lot of struggle and, and anxiety for these students to, to wear the masks in school when they're not wearing them a lot of other places. So if we have those high vaccination rates, and we know that our younger students are also vaccinated at home, um, I just want to make sure that we're allowing for our high school students, um, to, to have the best experience that they can, knowing that the, the vaccination rates might be higher in that cohort. Um, sorry, my voice is a little out. But just as we're moving forward and keeping abreast of that, just possibly considering treating the high school students differently. That's my only comment. Other than that, I think it sounds great.
So the next topic I would like to discuss on the agenda this evening in item 11H is an item asking the Board for, uh, to give administration permission to expand Project ACIT. And Project ACIT, we, we embarked upon that last spring, uh, and that's a partnership between CHOP and the Office of Public Health, where we've been able to offer rapid testing for our employees. We've continued that this fall, and we'd like to expand it to include students with, obviously, parental consent. Uh, it's not something we would do without contacting the parents and, and obviously getting written parental consent. Um, there, there's two main reasons why we'd like to expand Project ACIT, and we have to, we've applied to the Office of Public Health and CHOP for approval to do this testing, and it's assurance testing, it's rapid tests, it's not as reliable as PCR, but it is a good, it's a good indicator, uh, in case a student or employee has, is positive for COVID. One goal is to reduce the number of students who quarantine as a result of being close contacts on one of our buses. So I'm going to digress from test to stay and just remind families, and many of our families know this, and I know it was asked at a previous Board meeting, the rules are different for classroom versus busing. Uh, when, when on a bus, even if you, both parties are masked, uh, if you are in close proximity within six feet for 15 consecutive minutes or more, uh, even if you're asymptomatic, we have to quarantine students. As an example, just in the past week and a half, upstairs, we've had, uh, a few positive cases, more than a few, we've had seven positive cases in different classrooms, so they're not connected to the classrooms. But as a result, we have 30-plus students who had to quarantine because they were on the bus in close proximity. Uh, and CES is experiencing, as our largest elementary and probably, and obviously, the fewest number of vaccinated students, because they weren't of age, you know, that's where we're seeing a lot of our cases, uh, with the middle school, uh, being second. And so that's been a frustrating point for principals, for parents, uh, for our teachers. Uh, we certainly get the students up and on, on Zoom right away, and parents have been great. They've been understanding, while frustrated, understanding that this is something that we have to do. The test-to-stay program would allow us that if we have students who are asymptomatic, uh, after we get parental consent, and if I was sitting next to Mrs. Moore on the bus and I'm positive, uh, Mrs. Moore could come in on day one and take a rapid test, and as long as she is asymptomatic and negative, she could continue in school. On day three, take another one. On day five, take another one. Because normally, she would be quarantined for a minimum of seven days, and then if tested negative, could return on day eight. This keeps kids, this could potentially keep kids in the classroom. Uh, we certainly understand that especially for our littlest students and our youngest students, uh, taking a test like this, you know, you might want to wait until, uh, your parent or guardian comes in, uh, and we can certainly make accommodations for that. So we're just getting approval tonight, uh, to move forward with putting this plan together. It's our goal to try to start it, uh, in, on or about December 6th. Uh, it may take a few more days, but we really, you know, not knowing what the rules are going to be for quarantining, and if there's an uptick in cases, uh, this is potentially a way to keep students in school. The second goal is to, uh, test students who are, show mild symptoms. You know, I've had parents call us, we've had parents call us and say, "Well, my child has allergies, uh, but they have a runny nose and, and watery eyes, and so they've had to quarantine for potentially having COVID." So if we have minor symptoms, and our nurses really do a great job trying to distinguish, uh, if it's, you know, multiple COVID symptoms, or if, uh, you know, a child has a fever and whether they need, whether they can make it through the day or not, and what's appropriate. But if we have this ability, and we can test students on the spot, then they would be able to stay. So, uh, North Penn School District has piloted this, they've been doing it for about a week and a half. Uh, we're in line to hopefully start within two weeks, pending Board approval, along with a few other districts. If the Board approves it this evening, uh, we would do a massive communication blast to our families, explaining it, explain what the consent means. Uh, but we've also, uh, we're in the process of hiring additional, uh, personnel who can administer the rapid test, uh, because our nurses are really stretched. They would do it under the supervision of the principal and our nurses, but, uh, in the buildings, um, but we really just can't add one more thing to our nurses' plate. Uh, and it's, I've been trained in giving it, and, and so as the administrative team here, we've been administering it for, uh, our faculty and staff, uh, for their weekly tests. Uh, so we think this is a good thing that will hopefully keep kids in school. But I wanted to talk about it tonight, uh, before the Board, uh, before the Board, uh, votes on it, and the community would have a chance to speak to it as well. That concludes my update.
Okay, now is the time for public comments on the agenda. Drew, do we have anything?
Uh, there are no hands raised.
Dr. Christian, Superintendent's report.
There we go. Item nine, uh, motion to approve the personnel report in extracurricular contracts as outlined in 9B and 9C. Board action is requested for the recommended personnel changes, appointments for promotion, employment, or transfer. They are subject to the presentation of valid credentials, employment verification, documentation, and state-mandated requirements.
Is there a motion from the Board? Beth? And a second, Chris? Any questions or comments for Dr. Christian? All in favor? Great, thank you. Uh, student representatives.
Good evening, Dr. Christian, school board members and community. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to provide the monthly school student report.
White Marsh Elementary was excited to recently roll out a new White Marsh Proud program, which consists of numerous incentives to promote positive behavior and good choices throughout the entire school. Proud tickets are given to students who demonstrate tenets of proud behavior, and students can also earn shout-outs for doing something special. Additional elements to this program will continue to be introduced all year long. Other recent activities at WES included Red Ribbon Week, Veterans Day celebrations, Treats for Troops, and a Thanksgiving food drive with the White Marsh Police Department's K-9 Unit. As always, White Marsh thanks the entire school community for their generous support.
During the month of October, Ridge Park practiced two safety drills. The local fire department and Tim McDonald helped them for their monthly fire drill, and with the support of Tim McDonald, Ridge Park practiced the first lockdown of the year. Students and staff did an incredible job with both drills. Students, staff, and caregivers enjoyed fall festivities on October 28th, including the return of the Fall Parade, and everyone was excited for this bit of normalcy. Both students and staff dressed up and participated in the parade. Many thanks to Mrs. Cindy O for providing fun music for all. Finally, a huge thank you to the Ridge Park PTO and homeroom parents for making Ridge Park's Fall Parties a success.
The Plymouth Elementary had Elmwood Park Zoo, Zoo on Wheels, come to PE on Friday, November 5th, 2021, for a kindergarten field trip. The field trip was sponsored by the PE PTO. On Veterans Day, Plymouth Elementary honored the veterans in our community by placing American flags along Plymouth Road. PE celebrated World Kindness Day on Friday, November 12th. Students participated in grade-level activities such as giving compliments, spreading kindness, and writing positive posters. PE is celebrating American Education Week from November 15th until November 19th. This year's theme includes "Education is a Work of Heart." Each day features different dress-up themes, including wearing red hearts, college gear, and sporting panda pride. Additionally, students participated in activities during the morning meetings where they discussed their hopes and dreams for the future and created thank-you cards for people at PE. Bus drivers and cafeteria staff were acknowledged with special treats, and in response to an in-person visitation day, teachers planned surprise videos for families. Mystery readers were also surprised with read aloud activities that the students watched during the week. The PE spirit team collected over 2,000 books to help rebuild the Fort Washington Elementary School's library, which received damage during Hurricane Ida in early September. The students worked together to sort books by age level and carefully checked each item's condition. This month, the spirit team also kicked off its second project of the 2021-2022 school year, a holiday gift outreach. Their goal is to provide gifts to 30 children whose families are in need this holiday season.
A wonderful Fall Parade was held at Conshohocken Elementary on October 28th. Students had a delightful time parading in their festive costumes, and many, many parents, family members, and friends lined Harry Street to watch the parade. The Conshohocken Police Department and Fire Department assisted by leading the parade and blocking traffic as the school community marched down Harry Street. They were also excited to welcome the PWHS marching band to be a part of the parade. After the parade, the marching band took time to perform a few songs for the students and also to demonstrate and discuss the many instruments that are part of the marching band. The Conshohocken Elementary Helping Hands Club made treat bags to distribute to the marching band to show their appreciation. Safety procedures were practiced throughout Fire Prevention Week, and a successful fire drill was conducted on October 14th, 2021. The Conshohocken Fire Department visited the school on October 7th and demonstrated fire safety and prevention. Students enjoyed learning about the equipment that the firefighters use to stay safe. Students enjoyed learning about the equipment that the firefighters use to stay safe.
The Colonial Elementary Fall Parade, led by Principal Rock and Assistant Principal Talber, was a huge success. The students dressed in their favorite costumes and paraded around the track at PWHS. Many parents slash caregivers were in attendance. Following the parade, the students had a party in their classrooms with many snacks and activities. Thanks to the generosity of many parents and caregivers, the PTO will be providing pretzels to every student in the building the first Friday of every month. Each month, Trailblazer awards will be given out to three students per cluster for outstanding performance in the following areas: respect, responsibility, safety, and good choices. After the students receive their award, Mr. Talber will personally congratulate each student, and they will have the opportunity to take a picture that will be displayed on the bulletin board in the lobby. The students who were selected for September and October were so excited and proud of themselves. Fall portraits were taken on Monday, November 1st, with a retake date scheduled for Monday, December 13th. The Colonial Middle School, from November 1st to November 4th, held parent-teacher conferences. Parents who were unable to attend the scheduled conferences were able to reschedule them for a later date. Teachers participated in an Act 13 presentation and a Canvas course. The CMS building time had begun purging and packing for a February move. The Student Council is now enrolling students. Students should sign up by using the form on the announcement section of their grade-level Canvas page. Congratulations to the newly elected officers. Any questions regarding CMS Student Council can be directed towards Mrs. Penrice. CMS students have the opportunity to write anonymous thank you notes for staff and members in light of the American Education Week. Other events included Pyjama Day, Philly Sports Day, Team Color Day, Twin Day, and College Spirit Day scheduled for tomorrow. The November Book Fair was a great success. Students shopped with their ELA classes and were able to purchase books that entrusted them. With the fund raised by the book fair, CMS is purchasing more popular titles and graphic novels to display in the library.
Plymouth White Marsh's fall production of the musical Altogether Now was a big success, running both in person and digitally from Friday, November 12th till Sunday, I'm sorry, from Friday, November 12th till Sunday, November 14th. On that same note, auditions for the next musical, Newsies, have begun and will run till the afternoon of Friday, November 19th. Anyone who is interested is encouraged to reach out to Mr. Engel in D11. Both parents and students had the opportunity to tune in to the Ending the Silence Mental Health Awareness Presentation on the night of Tuesday, November 9th for the parents and during bonus block on Thursday, November 11th for the students. Students were encouraged to visit their guidance and school mental health counselors to seek assistance with any mental health concerns they may have. Students had the opportunity to participate in Deca Week this week, showing off their club spirit by dressing up for different themed days. Many fall sports wrapped up towards the start of the month, however, the football team is continuing their season to the district semifinals tomorrow night. The game will be held against Baird Reston High School, and a fan bus has been offered to students wishing to attend. Finally, winter sports have begun their seasons this week and are excited to begin their games and meets starting in December.
This is the conclusion of our November 18th student report. Thank you all for your time and have a nice evening.
Thank you both. We'll now go on to new business. Eunice?
This is a motion to accept and approve the audit report for the 2020-2021 fiscal year as, sorry. I'm sorry, I can't see the full screen. If Mr. Shupak wouldn't mind reading it, because I can't see it from here, I apologize.
Not a problem. This is a motion to accept and approve the audit report for the 2020-2021 fiscal year as presented, and approval to submit the PDE 2057 Annual Financial Report to PDE. The district's local auditor, BBD LLC, has completed the audit of the 2020-2021 fiscal year financials and will be presenting and reviewing the audit results in the district financial statements. Acceptance and approval of the audit results and the district financials will authorize the final audit report to be published and the financial reports to be filed with the Pennsylvania Department of Education.
Okay, is there a second to Adam's motion? Rosemary, thank you. Any questions about this audit report? All in favor? Great, thank you. Eunice, do you want Adam to continue, or are you able to see the next one?
I can see the next one, thank you, Sue. This is a motion to approve the stipulation to settle the assessment appeal for the property detailed below.
Is there a second, Adam? Any questions? All in favor? Great, thank you. And we have one more.
Okay, this is a motion to approve the attached resolution to opt out of the Act I timeline by certifying that the district will not raise the real estate tax rate in excess of the 2022-2023 Act I index of 3.4%. This motion also certifies that the school district will be unable to use the Act I exceptions included in the law.
Is there a second, Beth? Any questions or comments? Mr. Zablowski, do you just want to explain to people what the limit means, that we don't have to hit it, and what the exceptions are that we're giving up?
Sure. Well, the law was enacted in 2006 to limit school districts' ability to raise taxes to the statewide limit, or index is what they call it. The index this year is 3.4%. The exceptions that we're giving up are there's a special ed exception, because that's a, you know, sort of an uncontrollable cost. There's also a retirement contribution, which is, again, a mandated statewide pension that we have to contribute to, which, again, we don't have any control over that. So we reviewed basically the early factors that are going to be having an impact on the 22-23 budget, and we feel that with the positives we're looking at so far, and with the good year that we just finished with the 2021 year and the 21-22 year's looking pretty good, we will not have to be anywhere close to the 3.4%. So by opting out of this timeline, it takes a little bit of the pressure off. We don't have to adopt a preliminary budget, which is normally a guesswork in February, and then we can concentrate on getting some real numbers for the April and then the final adoption in June.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Great, thank you. Jen?
Motion to approve the attached hosted services agreement with Lancaster Lebanon Intermediate Unit, IU 13, to provide electronic Act 168 services for a term of three years effective December 1st, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Kathy? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Kathy?
Yes, this is a motion to approve the agreement with US Medical Staffing, Inc., to provide substitute nursing services as outlined in the attached document.
Is there a second? Rosemary, any questions or comments? All in favor? Great, thank you. Mrs. Sutcliffe?
Yeah. Okay. I'm very happy to make this motion. This is a motion to elect Dr. Michael Christian as Colonial School District Superintendent for the time period of July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2027, in accordance with 24PS Section 10-1071, 10-1073, and 10-1075. And motion to enter into a contract to establish salary and fringe benefits for the, sorry, for the position of district superintendent as set forth in the motion to elect, prepared by the solicitor. Dr. Christian, we knew it was a, we knew we were lucky when we got you the first time and just really happy to, you know, come to an agreement and that you'll be with us for the next five years. And that is a motion.
Okay, do we have a second? Truna, are there any comments or questions from the board?
I would also like to just reiterate what Beth said. Being involved in the interview when we hired you, it was pretty much a slam dunk, and we would love to see you stick around for five more years, work 24 hours a day, seven days a week, like you always do. We're hoping maybe you'll take a day or two off here and there, but certainly, I don't think you knew what you were signing up for when you went through with the year we've had with COVID, the year, almost two years, but we certainly are glad that you are willing to stick around.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor? All right, it looks unanimous, you're stuck.
Thank you very much. This is a great board to work with and for, wonderful community to be a part of, and faculty, staff, administration, and most importantly, the strong families that we have in Colonial. So very humbled and appreciative of your support, and we will continue to work hard together as a team. Thank you.
Okay. Beth?
This is a motion to approve a settlement and limited release agreement due to student confidentiality. This agreement was reviewed in executive session prior to this meeting.
Is there a second, Chris? Thank you. Questions? All in favor? Kathy?
Yes, this is a motion to expand Project ACIT to include voluntary COVID-19 rapid antigen testing for Colonial School District students provided parental consent is obtained.
Is there a second? Chris? Any questions? All in favor? Great, thank you. Chris?
Sure. Motion to approve the revisions to the board policies outlined below on a second-read basis. Policy 307, student teachers and interns. Policy 602, budget planning. Policy 603, budget preparation. Policy 709, building security. Policy 716, integrated pest management. Policy 130, homework. And Policy 212, reporting student progress.
Is there a second to that motion? Rosemary, thank you. Questions? All in favor?
There's no report this evening?
Thank you. Committee reports, community relations, Kathy?
Yes, community relations met on Monday, November 8th, and the main order of discussion was about the Colonial School District athletics programs. Mr. Bretts came in and provided a presentation for us about the number of student athletes we have participating in our sports and in our clubs, as well as our extra, other extracurricular activities, and just discussed numbers and making sure we have our students being involved. We're talking about rewriting, writing, establishing a mission statement for athletics department and getting that onto our website and make sure that we're all rallying behind our student athletes and having some fun, bringing, continuing to bring that school spirit. I mean, our football team has a big game tomorrow night, lots of really fun stuff happening at the high school. We also went in-depth with regard to Project ACIT, which Dr. Christian already touched on, and then we also reviewed the fact that our mental health services and resources are much easier to find on our website. So just wanted to make sure everybody knows that, much appreciated to our staff for getting that done, but all of our resources are much easier to find on our website now. Our next meeting is, I have no idea when. When? January, holy buckets. We'll be meeting again in January. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Curriculum, Beth?
The curriculum committee also met on Monday, November 8th. Mrs. Gregitis presented an overview of the beginning-of-year data and also highlighted our school improvement plans for the 2021-2022 school year. It was really nice, we had the opportunity to hear directly from some of our building administrators, they came and joined us for our meeting. So thank you to them for coming out and sharing what is going on in their buildings. We're very appreciative of our teachers and all the hard work they're doing with our students this year. Mrs. Gregitis also shared class size ranges for all of our schools. Mr. James provided updates on the DEI meeting and announced that the next meeting will be next week, no, sorry, two weeks, November 30th, at 6:00 PM in the PW cafeteria. And then Mrs. Gregitis finished the meeting up by giving updates to the school district's lesson plan guidelines. I also just want to take a moment to thank Mrs. Northcutt and Mrs. Dow and formerly Mrs. Franklin Becker for all their dedication and work on the curriculum committee. Thank you, guys. And our next meeting will also take place in January. So thank you.
Thank you. Chris, facilities?
Sure, thanks. At our meeting this past Monday, we looked at the five-year capital improvements plan. Much of what we have coming up over the next five years is going to be more of a maintenance kind of phase with roof, looking at the roofs and things of the building. So it's going to be a lot of stuff that's behind the walls or on top of the roof, but not a lot of pretty stuff like we have with a new building. So that's going to be what's going on in the five-year plan. And I'd just like to recognize the facilities department for their continual efforts to assist the middle school staff and prepare for the move in February. This is a very monumental task, and it's going to require lots of coordination and communication, and the excitement is building.
Thanks, Chris. Eunice, finance?
Finance committee did meet on Monday of this week. I have no further updates beyond the items that we discussed on this agenda, and I wish the best with the ongoing management. Mr. Zablowski has done a wonderful job, along with his team and Dr. Christian, to manage the district finances, and it's been a pleasure to support them as part of the finance committee.
Oops, thank you, Eunice. Mrs. Sutcliffe, HR?
I can't see whether I'm on or not, but I don't have a report.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Franklin Becker, tech school?
So I am pleased to report that in addition to having identified our new executive director, Dr. Angie King, who will take her role formally in January of 2022, she now has a full complement of administrative staff. She's hired her replacement, as well as a new supervisor of business operations for the tech school, so they have a full complement of staff as that transition continues. They're also starting to proceed with a number of repairs and renovation activities that need to happen to keep that building state-of-the-art, and they just ran some very successful open houses for students who are very interested. The new program in exercise and rehabilitation sciences is going full steam ahead, and we're thrilled to see the success of that program. So lots happening at the tech school, and can't wait to see how the next few years play out with the continued growth there.
Thank you. Mrs. Dow?
Yes, the intermediate unit is hosting the Montgomery County Recruitment Outreach County-Wide Education Job Fair on Monday, November 22nd, from 4:00 to 6:00. It's for current educators, students, recent grads, and those seeking a career change. Are invited to speak one-on-one with school district representatives from all around Montgomery County about open positions in our school districts, including teachers, paraprofessionals, nurses, bus drivers, food service, custodial and maintenance, and office and clerical positions. Candidates interested in attending are strongly encouraged to register online at mciu.org/mcro.
Thank you, Mrs. Dow. Anyone have anything to contribute to legislative report? Anyone have anything to contribute to legislative report? Okay, Municipal. Mrs. Northcutt?
Yes. Conshohocken, the Borough is pleased to announce that our outdoor fitness court is now open at Suck Cliff Park. The Conshohocken Recreation Services Department partnered with the National Fitness Campaign to bring this world-class outdoor body weight circuit training system to the Borough. The fitness court is designed so people of all levels and abilities can get a full-body workout in just seven minutes. To learn more about the National Fitness Campaign and their mission, you can visit their website at nationalfitnesscampaign.com. The holiday registration is now open for Conshohocken's annual holiday decorating contest. Prizes will be awarded to the first, second, and third-place winners in each ward. One house will be awarded the Best in Conchi prize. These prizes include gift cards from various Conshohocken local businesses, and the application is available on the Borough website. On December 8 at noon, the Borough Council will be holding a senior luncheon, a senior holiday luncheon, at the Fellowship House. On Saturday, December 11, from 12:00 to 2:00, families will be gathering at the Community Center at the Fell for Winter Wonderland Celebration, with gingerbread house-making, moon bounce house, arts and crafts, games, and an appearance by Santa. Registration will end on December 4, or until when maximum capacity is reached. And last item, the Borough of Conshohocken this year is going to be hosting two holiday-themed drive-in movies at the Bee Field, located at 13th, East 13th Avenue and Halliwell Street. The events are rain or shine, but will be canceled in the event of severe inclement weather. The names of the films will be announced on the Borough website, and this will be on December 11 and December 18. From 7:00 PM until 9:00 PM. So the holiday festivities are going to be happening very quickly in Conshohocken, and going throughout the rest of November and all through December.
Thank you. Any other?
Yeah, I would like to mention that Santa Claus has come into town. He's going to be arriving on the Harmonville Fire Company fire truck to the Plymouth Meeting Mall this Saturday at 10:00 AM. And the exciting part of it, besides being Santa Claus, is the PW marching Colonials will be ushering him in. So if you come out to the mall at 10:00 AM, you'll get to see the Plymouth White Marsh Marching Band and Santa Claus. And the festivities actually will go all the way till noon, not, the marching band won't be there till noon, but till noon, they're going to have holiday music, balloon twisting, special appearances by Rudolph the Red-Nosed Reindeer, and Anna, and Elsa from Frozen, and that's going to be at the Fountain Court at the mall.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Plymouth has a lot of activities also. The outdoor holiday market at the Community Center is this Saturday, November 20, from 10:00 to 2:00. There will be tables from crafters and vendors featuring homemade gifts for Hanukkah and Christmas. The holiday tree lighting ceremony is December 1. It'll kick off at 6:00 PM at the Service and Devotion Monument at the corner of Walton Road and Germantown Pike. The holiday lights contest is happening again, it's free to enter. You can submit your home for its decorations, or you can just vote for your favorites. Registration ends December 13, judging is the 14th to 19th, and winners are announced on the 20th. Breakfast with Santa is at the Community Center on Saturday, December 18, from 9:00 to 10:30. Santa will be shaking hands this year, and having his picture taken with the kids. There will be a game room, and a light breakfast will be served. And the Schools App Activity Days at the Community Center are on the 28th, 29th, and 30th, from 9:00 to 6:00, and a variety of sports and crafts for kids will happen each day.
Thank you. Anybody else? Rosemary, Colonial School District Education Foundation?
The 2021 Colonial School District Education Foundation Annual Campaign has begun and runs through December 31. The theme of this year's campaign is inspired by a quote by Sartor: "Individually, we are a drop; together, we are an ocean." So please join us in participating in our Every Drop Counts CSDEF Annual Campaign, with the goal of raising $10,000 by the end of 2021. Every donation gets us closer to that goal, and if your company matches your donation, that's an added and much appreciated benefit. As of yesterday, the campaign had reached $3,610 in donation. Information can be found on the school district's website under, in the Foundation section, and also on Facebook, through the Colonial School District Education Foundation. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosemary. Public comments on anything? Come up?
Hi, my name is Claudia Ing, I'm living Plymouth Meeting. When the Board revisits the discussion about lifting the mask mandates after the calendar year, please keep an open mind and consider all grade levels. Masks are detrimental to both learning, socialization, and mental health for every single student, regardless of age. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Bugley, do we have any comments or questions? Hands raised?
There are no hands raised at this time. You see one?
Tracy Wattenmaker has her hand raised.
Got it, thank you. Please state your full name and place of residence before commenting. Please state your full name, place of residence, before commenting.
Sorry, I think I was muted. This is Tracy Wattenmaker, White Marsh Township, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So yeah, I just wanted to basically echo everything that Claudia just said, to sort of just give the same acknowledgement to all the children in the school district relevant to the mask mandate and allowing for choice. I do want to actually call out, this is the second meeting where I've actually heard a board member, a particular member, you know, try to prioritize the high school students. It's the second occasion. I've heard the high school students tried to be in a separate determination for not wearing masks. I think Mrs. Petrucci tonight made the comment about how, you know, all these children are, they're together all the time, and it's really hard for them. It's hard for all students wearing these masks, all of them, whether you're for the masks or against the masks, it's hard. So here, a board member continuously tried to essentially segregate out the high school older students, perhaps because you have a high schooler, who knows? You are a school board member, and you should be surrounding all school students, not just the high school students. It's the second time now you've mentioned this, it's a little disheartening. Thank you.
Any other hands raised? Mr. Bugley?
Yes, we do have one more. Please state your full name, place of residence, before commenting.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, this is Nina Savins from Plymouth Meeting, and I just want to actually thank the school board for the mask requirements they put in place. I feel actually so much safer having my children attend school, knowing that they are protected, that they're protecting their teachers, that they're protecting fellow students, and that we're able to keep our students in class every day in person because of these mask requirements. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
That's it at this time.
Okay. Board comments?
Can I make a comment?
Of course.
Great. I'm going to put, I'm going to try with the video, although it's eating up my battery very fast. So just, I wanted to just say a few things as my board service is coming to a close. I want to thank the administration for all of their work and leadership, it's been an honor supporting them through the challenges, both the typical for running a school district and the atypical ones over the last two years, and all the accomplishments that our school district has seen. We're very lucky to have all of you, and I'm very appreciative for all of your efforts, in particular to keep our students and our staff safe over the last two years. I want to thank Dr. Christian in particular, I'm very glad that he'll continue to be here for another five years. I want to thank him for his constancy in the face of every challenge that we've seen in particular over the last two years. I want to thank him for his commitment to being engaged with families and parents and being responsive, and for his love of education. If you've ever seen Dr. Christian go to a kindergarten class, which we got to do when we first joined the Board and got to tour, you'll see just how much he loves seeing education in action and interacting with our students, and I thank him for that. I want to thank the Cabinet members for leading their departments so well. I want to give particular thanks to Mr. Lally for managing the many facilities projects that have gone on here, in particular, the Middle School Construction Project. It was a pleasure to work with you as Facilities Chair for two years, and Mr. Zabloski for his strong financial guidance for the district. And I also want to thank our building principals, who've also put in tireless work every year, but especially the last two years. I want to thank our teachers and our staff for sharing their love of education and ensuring our students have both a great place to learn and get a great education while they're there, and get to pursue their interests. I'm not actually at the meeting because I'm traveling with my kid who's participating in one of the awesome extracurricular activities available to our students at the high school. I want to celebrate the accomplishments of the Board over the last four years, especially updating scores of policies, putting in place a policy to protect transgender students, and addressing long-needed building repairs in a number of our buildings, including the building you're sitting in right now, and the careful and massive undertaking to build a new school to address the enrollment increases. I want to thank the district for being fully committed to DEI with the addition of the position of Mr. James in the district. I want to wish the new Board great success and fortitude. I'm thrilled to see new faces and broader representation on the Board coming to us. This is a position of great pride, it can be very high-pressure, and it's great responsibility, but it can also be the very best temporary job you'll ever have as a volunteer. I hope you jump in, get to work right away, don't feel like you have to sit back and wait, ask those hard questions, take a stand, and follow your values to ensure that our students and our staff have what they need. I wish you all luck. I want to thank everyone for their support, and it's been an honor to serve. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you to Eunice, and Jen, and Adam, and Rosemary for your service to the Board. It has not been easy these last two years, and just want to show appreciation for all the hours that I know you've all put in for our students.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you, Mrs. Epstein, and thank you, Mrs. Franklin Becker, for your comments too. I would just like to share a few reflections, if I may, with the community, as my board service also comes to an end. It's, you know, it's amazing to think that both of my children, who are briefly here tonight, and are now both old enough to go to school, were not when I first started serving on the Board. Of course, that was back when COVID-19 was not a word any of us were familiar with, unfortunately. Service on a school board is an awesome responsibility, never more so than during an unprecedented pandemic, when the health of thousands of children and hundreds of employees rests in part on your decisions. I want to thank the members of our community for entrusting me with that responsibility. Although people may not have always agreed with every decision I made, I'd like to think it's a responsibility that I took seriously and tried to carry out with fidelity. I have also, unfortunately, watched with dismay, as many people have, as school board meetings across the country have unfortunately descended into rancor and fights over efforts to promote inclusion, and confront the injustices and inequalities that continue to plague our society. To me, inclusion is not about tearing us apart, but about bringing us together, to listen to each other, to learn how others in our community experience the world, including its injustices, and to work together to make our schools and our community better for all of us. I'm glad that our district continues the work of making room at the table for all members of our community, remains committed to educating every child, and recognizes that the ability to listen and to learn from each other are essential skills our students need to be successful. I'm proud of what the district has achieved and the challenges that we've met head-on during my time on the Board. Navigating an unprecedented global pandemic while prioritizing the health and safety of our students and employees, maintaining our strong educational program while launching innovative new courses and programs like the IB Career Program, keeping the third-lowest tax burden in Montgomery County, and a AAA bond rating through strong financial management, working to make our schools more inclusive, and to meet the needs of every child, including through the hiring of our first DEI officer, and the passage of a comprehensive policy protecting the rights of transgender students, building a new colonial middle school, enhancing transparency by making all board meetings and materials available online, and continuing to make the district a very desirable place to live and raise a family, which raises home values for all our residents. These are collective achievements, of course, in which I played only a very, very tiny part. I would like to thank my fellow board members, past and present, for your service and dedication to our community. It's not an easy volunteer position, and there are many other ways that one could serve without the stress and the pressure, but I'm grateful for everyone who stepped up to serve with me. I would like to thank the administrative team, Dr. Christian, and all of your staff for everything that you've done to keep our students and staff safe, and to deliver education during a time of unprecedented challenges. As board members, we oversee, but it is you who lead the district in carrying out its mission. I'd also like to acknowledge Mr. Zabloski for his strong financial management of the district and his great partnership during my time as Chair of the Finance Committee. I'm also very pleased that Dr. Christian will be sticking around. You know, I really appreciate your availability to parents, and, you know, and your willingness to sort of say things directly, and give your view of issues. And your commitment is something I deeply respect. No one works harder for our kids, for the district. I mean, Mrs. Moore was right when she said you basically work 24/7, and so we greatly appreciate that, and I think, you know, we also see how seriously you take your responsibilities and your commitment to all of our students. You know, the pandemic is, and how you've handled it and worked tirelessly to keep everyone safe is strong evidence of that. I would also like to thank our teachers and staff, who are the heart and soul of the district. You're the ones who come to work each day to teach our kids, keep them safe, make sure they are healthy, ensure that our schools are safe and clean, feed them lunch, help them through challenges, and provide the foundation for them to go out in the world and achieve their dreams. Sitting up here in this room, I've always tried to remember where the most important work of any school district happens, and who does it. Finally, I would like to thank my wife, Rachel, and my children, Teddy and Harper, who were here earlier and had to go because it's a school night, for understanding my desire to serve and for accepting all the missed dinners and time that comes with being on the school board. So, thank you, everyone.
I would like to thank the administration for all they have done in the four years I've been on Colonial School Board. I am grateful to have had Dr. Christian as Superintendent, not only for the years I was on the Board, but especially during the most difficult time during COVID. He has shown the ability to handle any situation that comes his way, whether it is financially tightening our belt, as he likes to say, or telling us we're going to need a bigger boat, when he talks about class-size projections. The summer of 2020 showed us that Dr. Christian, without a doubt, put students as a number-one priority in this district. We are incredibly lucky to have him as our
in this district. We are incredibly lucky to have him as our superintendent at a time when proper leadership is vital to our success. My kids' first day of kindergarten at White Marsh Elementary was when I realized how difficult the job of a public school teacher is. Mrs. Hope had just the right mix of caring, fun, and guidance to make both my kids' first experience at public school a cherished memory. Always remember that teachers are the backbone of the district. They are on the front line, showing up every day because they know the importance of educating our children. They are the ones who are willing to sacrifice their time and energy to do a job where you need to be all things to all people all of the time. Colonial teachers have performed the monumental task of cultivating a relationship with our children under unparalleled circumstances, even through a computer screen. While things may not have been perfect, the teachers showed resilience and a willingness to perform outside the box in a way we could never have imagined just a few years ago. As I welcome the new board members, my message is this: You are coming onto the board at a time when school boards across the country are in turmoil, some not so far from here. Parents are angry and speaking out. Be patient, because when they say they are angry, oftentimes the source of their anger is fear. We wish we could shield our kids from all the threats society throws at us, and it is scary when we realize that that is not possible. But remember, we all have the same objective: to do what is best for the kids above all else. Don't be intimidated. Stand up for what you believe in, even when it gets difficult, because it will. Undoubtedly, someone will say the decisions you make are political, although it's funny how no one ever calls a decision political when they agree with it. In addition, when someone says you're pushing an agenda, keep in mind that when they agree with you, they call it a goal. When they don't agree with you, they call it an agenda. Always remember you are qualified to be on this board, and your voice is just as important as the other board members. Don't let anyone try to convince you otherwise. My biggest regret is not standing up for myself when some of my fellow board members did it to me. Accept that this will be a learning process and remain confident that you will be guiding the district in a positive way. You each bring knowledge and experience that will be an asset to the board and students alike. As my four years on school board come to a close, so does my time with Colonial School District. My daughter graduated last year, and my son will be graduating this year. I cannot properly put into words how much I have learned during the past four years on this board. I have learned how so many people have such dedication, responsibility, and commitment to this district. I have learned how passionate people can be when it comes to their children and the lengths they will go to protect them. I also learned how people can fall into the trap of being driven by their egos, and that sometimes bullies don't just grow out of it. But most of all, I have learned how lucky I am to have been a part of Colonial School District, not only by having my kids get a wonderful education, but also by having the opportunity to help shape the future of Colonial for years to come.
I want to give a special thank you to Dave Sherman, now retired, our former Community Relations Coordinator, Karen Burke, Director of People's Services and Special Education, and Kim Newell for all their support during my three years as Chair of Community Relations Student Life Committee. My work on the Curriculum Committee for all four years and continued work on the CRSL this year have been, brought such joy to me. I am a retired teacher, and about two weeks ago, I was in Center City in the evening, and a young woman came up and said, "Mrs. Northcott, you were my sixth-grade teacher." And she introduced me to a friend she was walking with, and she said, "I just remember you reading The Lion, the Witch, and the Wardrobe" to us, and that is, was such a special book to me. Those memories of what it means to impact the lives of children, I have so valued my time on the school board to begin, be able to serve the community in another, from another side of the education world. And it was such a thrill this year, last year also, to see one of the students I also had at the Jenks School, who is now a parent in our school district and involved in our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. The cycle continuing on, being part of this group, and just looking forward to the future and the continued work to keep our children healthy, happy, and entering into the new years ahead with the education that they need to reach their dreams. So thank you to everyone.
Any other comments?
I would like to make a brief comment, if you don't mind.
Oh, no. I'm sorry.
These two years have been not easy, to say the least, and we, the students, appreciate all that you guys do, the people sitting here tonight, and some of the board members on Zoom. We appreciate your continued support, and we are excited to work with the new board members that will be coming.
Thank you. And I just would like to say good luck to the four of you moving on to whatever your next endeavor is, and thank you for your time that you've spent on the board. Anybody else? If not, this meeting is adjourned.